Here.
Here.
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum with all members present. Uh, I will ask each one to stand if will. I'll lead us in prayer and I ask Commissioner Bone if he'll lead us in the pledge. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day, thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. We ask your mercy upon us, we ask your wisdom upon us as we take, conduct business in this county tonight. Give us insight into how, as to how you prefer that we do this business. We ask you to watch over us as we leave here and go to our homes, keep us safe. And may we always give you the glory for everything, in Christ's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, if everybody will turn your phones off, put them on airplane mode, or silence them. Okay, uh, do I have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion we approve the agenda.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second.
Second.
Commissioner Childers, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, and it passes unanimously. We have no public comments, we have no organizational reports. The consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second Commissioner Perkins. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of July the twenty-second, claims list August twelfth. Sheriff's Department, resolution for new hire Josh Glass is full-time deputy. Reclassification of Colin McDaniel as full-time deputy. Approved to new hire of Blaze Sky Raymond and Peter Harrington as correction officers, commission office, uh...
Retire the K-9.
Resolution, oh, I'm sorry, resolution from sheriff to retire K-9 officer, traffic and transfer. Under the commission office, resolution to allow Chilton County Court Services Incorporated to continue to operate a community correction program within the boundaries of Chilton County. Uh, resolution to accept resignation of Jessica Primerton from Transit Department. Resolution to advertise for director of transit. Resolution to hire temporary interim director of transit. Resolution to contract for transit director training. Resolution to approve invoices for grants. Cassidy Cundy Engineering thirty-three forty-three oh-two, alpha sign and seal, four hundred dollars. Resolution to open Walmart online account. Resolution to open money market sweep accounts for general fund and gasoline fund at First Bank of Alabama. Signatories for the chairman and vice chairman and administrator to sign. Resolution to approve twenty-five twenty-six Montgomery County Juvenile Detention Facility Agreement, Chairman to sign. Resolution to approve closing of commission office for milner training, scheduled on days requested. Road Department, resolution to approve physical year CRA CR. Resolution to approve TTL agreement for soil classification testing. And pending county attorney approval. Resolution to remove Richard Adlin Ray from payroll. Resolution to approve attached field, position field request for Kenny Gore Jr. Resolution to approve attached field request for transfer of Tony M. Finger at pay and, uh, pay rate listed. All in favor of passing the consent agenda, raise your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Old business, or early closures and payroll. That will be our attorney, Ben Goldman.
Alright, um, we have, uh, again pending the, uh, motion that was previously circulated, uh, a draft. And, um, that would authorize the commission to, uh, through its chair to close early on days before a holiday. And the, the language in it, um, for the, for your regular employees, they'll be paid for that time when you close early, who are salaried. The question, uh, remains as to whether you would prefer, uh, for your hourly employees to pay them for that time of closure or not. But depending on that, I can offer, offer a motion, uh, if someone wants to make it.
Okay, anyone want to, uh, offer a motion, then we can discuss it and amend it if necessary.
Can I, can we say what's early, early timeframe?
We'd like to have a motion.
You have to.
Okay, alright.
Need to like for holidays.
Uh, I'm, I move that we adopt one of the, uh, options that our attorney is going to recommend.
I'll second.
Alright, motion Commissioner Childers, second Commissioner Hall to adopt one of the motion, or one of the options, uh, from our attorney. Now, floor is open for discussion, Ms. Hall.
Yes, what's, what's deemed early, so what's that timeframe, how many hours will be deemed early?
Uh, I think that would probably depend on what holiday it is and what's, what's occurring. Cause most time it would be prior to a holiday, cause I was asking about, you know, a couple hours early on July the fourth for lunch. And then we go home early, uh, which would probably an hour, maybe hour and a half.
Can, can, can we be more specific, so?
Yeah, like, like the example is if we decide to close at lunch on July the third.
I got that.
Do we, do we can, do we pay the hourly employees for not being here the rest of their four hours of the day that they miss?
So, if you have a salaried employee, they work an average eight hours, an eight-hour day. So, for hourly employees, they work eight hours a day. So, are we gonna say we're gonna pay them four hours for early? So, we have to have something definitive in writing that specifies, do, do we not, what time, so? If my department just says, I'll just want you off early, so what's early for me might be thirty minutes as opposed to twelve o'clock. So, I just wanted to be more specific with a time. Can that be self-aware, waging our purposes for it to be, um, um, equal for both, uh, salary and hourly employees?
This wouldn't be for all the departments at one time, this would be like the road department had a situation where they wanted to bring them in, eat, and just let them go home. It wouldn't be for all the departments at the same time. Cause just like we close, uh, like the commission office will be closing for training that day, uh, or maybe they're off for some reason. It'd be up to the department head.
Well, the way I read, the way I understood, read it was like, if we chose as a commission to be closed on Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Do you, do you pay your hourly employees for not being here? That's the way that reads.
Okay.
That's how, now, uh, if my understanding is correct, option one would, would not pay them, option two would pay them.
It's been two or three weeks since I've read that, and I don't have mine with me, and, uh, but if you could, it's, uh, cover the two options and, and explain those, that'd be wonderful.
Sure, um.
Thank you.
And, and if I can speak to Commissioner Hall's question very briefly.
Okay.
It leaves the number of hours of closure, like the time of closure, to the discretion of the chairman of the commission, his sole discretion. And the, the philosophy behind that, um, there, because there are some places that authorize, like, say, if you're gonna do it, it's a certain number of hours. But that then tends to create an expectation then, where like the holiday then just becomes a longer holiday. And really, this is meant to be kind of an accommodation, a little bit of a morale boost. And so, it's made on the day of pending kind of the needs of not only the county, but the specific departments. So, let me, let me read this, and, uh, no, we can take a look. The commission resolves to authorize the chairman of the commission, in the chair's sole discretion, to authorize an early closure for all or specific county departments, or specific department sections prior to a state or federal holiday, or prior to a holiday designated by the commission. Early closure will be subject to the county's operational needs, the potential impact on the citizens of Chilton County, and fairness among employees, considering their roles and responsibilities. In the event of an early closure, department heads shall be responsible for notifying their affected employees as early as possible. And commission staff shall inform the public of the early closure through appropriate channels such as website announcements, social media, or postings. And it, and then, and then we get into the either-or language. The first option says exempt employees who are ready, willing, and able to work on an authorized early closure day will receive their full salary. And, and I'm gonna pause there to say, what, what that means is, is that you have actually had to report for duty that day. If you've taken it as a day off, then you just are using your day off, you don't get the, the...
As exempt.
You don't get the, uh, the time back. Non-exempt employees will be paid for the hours they work until the early closure time. Non-exempt employees may cho, in, so in other words, this first option, you're not paying them for that time when you've closed early. Non-exempt employees will be paid for the hours they work until the early closure time. Non-exempt employees may choose to use their accrued paid time off to cover the unworked hours. If a non-exempt employee chooses not to use PTO, they will not be paid for the unworked hours. So, that was option one. Option two would pay the hourly employees, and it reads, all regular full-time employees who are ready, willing, and able to work on the, on an authorized early closure day are eligible for early closure benefits. Exempt employees will receive their full salary for the day. Non-exempt employees will be paid for the early closure hours at their regular hourly rate. So, that's the end of option two. And then it finishes either way with this statement. If an employee chooses to take the early closure day as full, as a full day off, the full day off will be deducted from their available PTO balance in order to be paid for the period of early closure. And that speaks to what I was saying earlier about, you, you have, about the employee, even an exempt employee having to be ready, willing, and able to work. They have had to report to work that day. If they've taken the day off, then that just is what it is, so.
No, I don't have a second.
What?
Oh, okay.
We're talking about maybe four hours?
More like hour and a half, two hours. That was all it was the day that, uh, we talked about it, Mr. Road Department, I was out there.
So, if we take a solid person and we give them this, and then we don't give our hourly people this, that's kinda looking down on them, in my opinion.
Well, the reason this came about was kind of like, you know, just goodwill, say anything, because basically, we're gonna, gonna finish lunch probably an hour, hour and a half before time for them to leave and go home. We would just, you know, just let them, pay them and let them go home, getting the rest of the day off.
But it doesn't apply to the person, like, if he took off the whole day?
No.
Is it, is it scheduled, or closures?
No.
Or, so, okay.
No, maybe basically, if it wasn't scheduled closure, uh...
This is some weather day?
No.
Or something like that?
Holiday.
This, this happened on Fourth of July, I think it's Fourth of July, or late, more day, whatever, talking about feeding lunch. And then, you know, they got, everybody got through eating early, and like I said, about an hour and a half, just let everybody have the day, rest of the day off, so, you know, long weekend, basically what it would have been. But...
But you wanna pay them.
It's, it's solely up to whoever's the chairman, so if he says he was gonna let them off after nine o'clock, they get off the rest of that day, too. Cause it ain't got no hour, like, two hours or three hours, he can call in anytime he wants to, right? Well, that's true, that's true. If he wants to call, if they wanna come in an hour and work from eight to nine, and him give them the rest of the day off, he's... I don't think, I don't think any, any, any of this group up here is gonna wanna do that and listen to the rest of the group come down, I know I'm not. Well, I'm just saying he could though. Yeah, you're right, I mean, that's, you're absolutely correct.
Based on the operational needs, as he read.
But if we've required them to come in at nine o'clock and we dismiss them, then they've been, they've been summoned to come to work, and they're ready to work, and we're not letting them work. So, I, I think this is, I don't have a problem with, I, I get your point, Joe, but I don't really have a problem with the chairman being able to make the call. As long as it's not abused, you know?
Well, well, I guess that's my question.
Nine o'clock is way too early to quit work. One o'clock is, is not enough time to get back out on the job before you're, before you're off at two o'clock? Is that, y'all work from six to two?
Six to two thirty.
Six to two thirty, so, yeah, I'm, it would make sense in a situation like that. But it, it doesn't make sense to work a half-day and then pay the other half-day, that's abusing the system, and that would be a discretion up here.
Now, my way of looking at it, I would do like I've done a couple times in the past, anybody have a problem with doing this?
Well, what I'm asking is this, is if, 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 um, just use Christmas Eve, is, is the courthouse open eight to five on Christmas Eve? Alright, so that's a, that, what, what time do we close on Christmas Eve? Or Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, just, well, e- either one, right before a scheduled holiday. If we're setting the hours of open and close, are we setting them differently, or are we just?
This has nothing to do with any set hours.
Well, that's why I'm saying, is it a, it's a scheduled day off?
If, if I may, there are some departments pers, possibly where it's more appropriate for an early closure than others. For example, if you have to have, um, a clerk available for filing during the regular hours, you may have to retain it. And even within the department, there may be a section of the department that has to stay open. For example, um, you know, it gives you the ability, I think, to, like, you, you wouldn't wanna send everybody home from the jail, right? So, I think, I think it gives you a little bit of, of flexibility within that.
I, I, I think instead of giving it to the chairman, we ought to give it to each individual, uh, head in their department if we're gonna give it to somebody.
That's what I've written down.
And the chairman be over, uh, whatever the commission's over, like, for the department, the commission office.
Yeah, but wouldn't you end up with a situation that says, well, they just decide on Friday, every Friday they leave at twelve, we're gonna pay the entire department for two hours? Why not have a...
It's a holiday.
No, we, we as a buddy can come in and fix that, you know, probably get rid of the department head.
This is, this is, yeah, and this is clear that it, it has to be pri, prior to a state or federal holiday, or a county declared holiday.
So, the department head should have that discretion in collaboration with the, uh, chair?
Yeah, he, he asked me about it, that, that's how I got the conversation.
And they can, they can handle that.
How many times has this come up in the past?
First time I, well, first time since I've been chairman's come up. Usually what we do, the, the old commission, that y'all don't agree a whole lot with. What we used to do is, we would, uh, you know, it'd come up two days, three days before, and we'd just all vote to do it.
You're talking about like closing early?
You can't vote to do it, it's gotta be... You'd know, if, if you keep up with the calendar, you know, these ladies and these people and these department heads, they'll call you and say, hey, look, man, uh, you know, Christmas Eve, we gotta work on Christmas Eve or whatever, we're gonna try to get off at twelve, you know, and then...
Yeah, which, which you end up paying everybody four hours.
That'd be a scheduled one, this, this sounds like it's, it's a spontaneous situational, uh, call. And I, I, I personally, I, I would prefer that it be the chair and not the department heads, but the, the chair should confer with the department head. If the department head doesn't wanna dismiss this department, then the chair should not.
No, I agree.
So...
But like he's talking about on a scheduled day, like if they, if they call and say, well, we don't wanna work after lunch on whatever day, then we're gonna pay the entire department for those four hours. Even though they're hourly, normally, now, I know in the corporate world, that don't go on.
No, that's, so I don't mind there.
This is just talking about the non-scheduled days.
I'm just trying to figure out if this is like, I'm, like, if it snowed and we had to leave early for two hours, I'm okay with paying everybody, if they had to go home out of the safety of precaution, and we do that anyway, cause we voted in or whatever.
This is something like I have done for my employees, to come up, we have a lunch, and a couple hours left, and y'all go home. And I don't dock them, it ain't that I got a lot of money, I just appreciate my employees. That's, that's the whole...
I think he's done that like a couple of times already, I think we fed them breakfast and lunch one time.
Yeah.
So, we have two options.
That's all this is about, is just saying, hey, we appreciate it, you know, there's an hour, hour and a half, cause it ain't, it ain't never gonna be, it might be two hours, but I doubt it.
So, we got two options?
Yeah.
From the attorney?
Alright, uh...
I'm still not real clear on whether it's a scheduled day off or not.
No, it's not a scheduled day off.
It's not scheduled.
It is a scheduled work day that a spontaneous event happens where you're gonna allow them to go home early.
Like a weather day?
No, no, weather days, weather days are pretty well covered.
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't do that, but we can make a decision to close early, and it would just be a regular day off. If that happened, would they get paid?
They'd have a meeting, and it would be then scheduled.
Right.
Yeah.
Look, this, this was a thought, you can vote it up, you vote it down, either way, and that, and I'm not gonna be mad or either way, I just thought this was a good idea. Because every now and then, there's a spontaneous event that happens, it ain't all the time.
For instance, he give them, we, we, he fed them lunch one afternoon at twelve o'clock. And there's no sense, and then he brought everybody in and had a safety meeting on top of that.
Yep.
And fed them lunch, there's no need to send them back out and work at twelve-thirty to come back in at two o'clock. It's like a couple hours, that's it.
You send them prepared, well, the time you get to make it.
That's what he's talking about, that's what, option two.
Other departments have elongated hours, though, you're, you're getting into four or five hours then.
It's a case-by-case basis.
Operational needs.
So, that's why...
So, it needs to be between, it's gonna have to be between the chair, it's gonna have to be approved by the chair.
That's what he just said.
Yeah, and it's, but it's gonna have to be added between the chair and the department heads.
Well, that's the only way I would do it as chairman, I would, if he wasn't in favor of it, say we do the road department, I wouldn't do it. And if it's Ms. Sylvia and the office staff, I'm not gonna do it.
That's right.
You know, I mean, no chairman should do that if the head of the department's against it, I mean, that's ridiculous. Anybody you offer day off will pay, ain't nobody gonna be against it, I can just tell you.
Yeah, but this is not like, this will happen once a week, every, every...
Two hours, two-hour increments.
Yeah, well, uh, some people don't understand.
As long as it's not abused, it's, I'm, 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 it's not gonna happen.
Well, I can promise you, as far as I'm concerned, while I'm saying, this, it ain't gonna get abused. Because like I said, most time, I'm gonna send y'all a message, y'all got a problem with doing this?
Won't we know before we have a meeting, if a department?
No, cause like I said, this came up, and I just had to be out there.
Oh, okay.
And I couldn't make the call. I wouldn't make the call, because it, you know, it's, I didn't have the, the jurisdiction or...
What I might suggest is, it, it, it sounds to me like perhaps a majority are in favor of some form of this, uh, where the hourly employees get paid. Let me put this in the form of a resolution that you can have in front of you instead of a motion that, that says that. And also, maybe just to alleviate the other concern, I think you spent kind of most, most of the time discussing, which is to put, say, like, a three-hour cap on that time.
Okay, that's, that's fine, yeah. Okay, now, if there's no objection, who made the motion?
I, I did.
Right, if no objection...
Mister Chair, I, I move that, uh, we postpone this until the next meeting.
Okay, you're moving, well, if we do that, then we gotta consider the options he gave us, instead of what he's bringing. If there's no objection from you, you made the motion, right?
I did.
And who made the second?
I did.
Okay, if there's no objection from the motion maker on second, then we take it off the table.
Uh, I, I would draw my motion.
Okay, alright, then that's off the table. And you will have something from Ben next time we discuss. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, commission office, Ms. Sylvia.
Um, I would like to ask the commission to open the nominations for the Chilton Water Authority.
Okay, do I have a motion to open those nominations?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Bone, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Hall, are there any discussions on it? If not, everybody in favor, raise your hand, and it passes unanimously.
I would like, I would like to point out that the positions for Julius Kelly and Regina Respis, um, their terms are up, and, uh, the board is requesting reappointment of those two.
Okay, I'm, I'm going, well, wait a minute, you gotta do the nomination form. Uh, I'm going to, if it's okay with y'all, I'm gonna put Julius Kelly as position one, and Ms. Respis as position two. So, do I have, uh, are there any nominations for the board for position one?
Oh, yeah, Julius Kelly.
Alright, Julius Kelly's been nominated for position one, are there any other nominations for position one? Okay, any nominations for position two?
Regina Respis.
Okay, Regina Respis, position two. Any other nominations tonight? Alright, if not, we will have two more meetings, and then we will vote on the appointments. Alright, anything else, Ms. Sylvia?
No, sir, that's all, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Billingsley?
No, sir.
Commissioner Bone?
Uh, no, sir.
Commissioner Childers?
Yes, sir, uh, offer a resolution, uh, to approve update description, uh, put that in form of a motion.
Alright, motion Commissioner Childers to approve updates animal control shelter job description, job is second. Second Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, any opposed, and it passes unanimously.
And I'll put this in the form of a motion, resolution to approve the posting of Animal Control Assistant Director position, second.
Second commi, motion Commissioner Childers, second Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, and it passes unanimously.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you, sir, Commissioner Hall?
Uh, yes, I would like to put a resolution for temporary hire of interim transit director.
And that would be?
Uh, and Kiantay DeJohnette, which is...
I have a motion from Commissioner Hall to hire, and it, as a temporary interim transit director, Kiantay DeJohnette.
Second.
Second Commissioner, uh, Billingsley, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, any opposed, and it passes unanimously. Alright, anything else, Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Hedley? Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
You wanna do that one first?
Nah, I'm gonna, we can just wait, and I can turn it over back to you.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna make this a motion, resolution to approve a back-to-school, uh, free fishing weekend on, at Lake Manuka on August the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Alright, have a motion Commissioner Perkins for a free fishing weekend, August sixteenth and seventeenth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Bone?
It's twelve and under, twelve and under, yes.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, raise your hand, any opposed, and it passes unanimously.
Alright, thank you, I'm gonna also ask for, to make this a motion, um, as, I may need to do this as two separate things, the resolution to remove the catch-and-release policy currently in place.
Second.
Alright, motion Commissioner Perkins, second Commissioner Bone to remove the catch-and-release policy, uh, is that, for what period of time?
Permanent.
Okay, okay, alright, just wanna make sure, alright, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, and it passes unanimously.
And the other would be a motion to update the operations manual to include the language, anglers may harvest largemouth bass under fourteen inches in length. Any bass over fourteen inches must be returned to the lake. Catfish over twelve inches in length can also be harvested. Anglers harvesting fish must abide by the state krill limits. All anglers must have their catch recorded at the check-in slash out gate or general store before leaving the park. And the park director has the authority to initiate catch and release or adjust krill limits if it becomes needed.
Alright, that was a motion from Commissioner Perkins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, any opposed, and it passes unanimously. Uh, can I have a motion to suspend rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, second.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second Commissioner Childers, suspend rules, all in favor, raise your hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay, back over to you, Commissioner Perkins.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion, as I move, uh, at the recommendation of our attorney, I move pursuant to section ninety-four point oh-one of the Constitution of Alabama, that the Chilton... that the Chilton County Commission set a public hearing to occur during the regular meeting of the commission on August the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in the commission chambers of the Chilton County Courthouse to enter into an operational agreement with Alabama Power and the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources.
Second.
Alright, motion Commissioner Perkins, second Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, uh.
If I, if I may, um, on that, I would also recommend that um you move to authorize the county administrator to.
Oh, yeah.
Publish, publish notice.
Okay.
Um, and then also item three on that as well.
I'll make a motion that the county administrator be authorized to take all actions necessary to ensure that notice is published in the newspaper and circulation in the county at least seven days prior to August twenty-sixth.
Alright, second Commissioner Childers, any, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, down to me. Uh, I need a resolution to approve Thompson tractor invoices.
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second Commissioner Bone, in discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Uh.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah.
You go, you want, you want orange?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, I thought we were still on the other one. No, I'm, I'm abstaining on that.
Okay.
Pay attention.
Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Yes.
Six, four, and one abstention. Sorry.
Thank y'all.
Ben, you're gonna poke him. Uh, I need a resolution to approve all occasions designs invoice. Uh, motion Commissioner Hall, second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh.
I'm kind of a lot of people, you know what I'm saying?
Pass. Okay, uh, you'll find in your packet an appraisal for the Cantero sixteen property. Title Mims of the Mims family has requested, uh, he, or he is asked to buy this property. Uh, and we surplused it and got an appraisal. It should be in there somewhere.
Set it airbagged.
Okay, alright.
I got it.
And it was appraised fifteen thousand and he's agreed to pay that. And according to the deed, uh, any descendant of Paul Mims has right of first refusal on the purchase. So, uh, do I have a motion to sell to the Mims family?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second Commissioner Childers, uh, any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
How many acres are landed?
Uh, two, two point five, I think it is. Let's see. I was just scrolling down to the dollar amount.
I think, I think you're right. I think, when I looked it up, it's about two acres.
I, I was thinking when I thought of that, it's like two point four seven or something. It's an odd amount. I'm sure it's on here somewhere, Joe, but I'm not that good at reading.
It's here.
Yes, yes.
Fifteen thousand. Yeah, I looked at the wrong line when I told you five thousand last night, Joe. It's fifteen. Alright, any other discussion? Uh, okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Um, and we have a resolution to uh put the sale of property into courthouse fund.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that motion still stands, so it goes in the courthouse fund. Okay, I'm sorry, I should have made that known, but we passed that motion two years ago when we surplused this. No, it, it, everything, with the motion said it would go into the courthouse fund, so it'd chip away a little bit. Uh, okay, uh, I would like for a resolution to approve for Roger Perkins and or Daryl Bone to attend the Alabama Recreational Trails Leadership Workshop.
I'll move to, um, if you don't mind, add, uh, our park director's name to that.
Okay.
I'll make that part of my motion as well.
Alright, have a motion, Commissioner Childers, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Can I do that?
I don't know.
I'll second it.
That's my names on there.
Commissioner Hall said he can't, she would.
I think I would.
I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw.
Okay, do I have a second? Second Commissioner Hall, any discussion? This will be for Commissioner Bone, Perkins, and our director, uh, Donald Bone, I mean.
Donald.
Donald's out.
You're just way.
I'm sorry, Donald, let me do that.
We're being recorded right now.
Any discussion?
You better be glad we're being recorded.
Why, you gonna do that publicity? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Uh, wait a minute, are you two voting for that?
No, I'm not.
Am I supposed to?
Y'all are going to jail.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll stand.
Okay.
I don't know, I gained nothing.
I don't care. I, I ain't taking the risk of wearing.
Well, this would be safe. You got enough votes to do it, okay. Uh. Okay, uh, hmm, I need to, y'all bear with me a second. I need to get Ben's opinion on this. And this was not on the agenda. We got to suspend the rules to vote to buy an item, but this has got to transpire before we can buy it. Now, suspending the rules is for one item only, so would this encompass the same, because it's for the same thing?
The motion to suspend the rules, ki- you, you could, you could phrase the motion to suspend the rules so that it encompasses both.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of uh moving funds and purchasing a piece of equipment for the road department.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion Commissioner Perkins, second Commissioner Bone. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, the rules are suspended.
And one abstention.
You ain't got a signal this one. It's, this, we ain't got to that point yet. You're just suspending rules.
I, I'm just going by what the lawyer says. I, I, you look like a jailer to me right now, buddy.
Yee-haw.
Just vote on it.
Uh, okay, I won't argue. Alright, I need a resolution to approve budget amendments as follows. Increase revenue land item one eleven sixty-one thousand triple O, other financing sources by one hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and zero cents.
Twenty seventy-two dollars.
Excuse me?
Seven.
What did I say?
Eight.
Okay, two seventy-two, my mistake. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Hall, do I have a second? Second Commissioner Bone, any discussion?
The, what, where's it coming from? What, what is the land item it's coming from?
It's uh coming from its fund balance.
It's from the road department's fund balance. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have six in favor and one abstention. Alright, I need a motion to increase expended dirt land item one one five three one double O five sixty-one. Direct purchase price of construction by one hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and no cents.
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Perkins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Hall, any discussion? That's the next item. Alright, okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six in favor and one abstention. Okay, now I need a resolution to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Caterpillar CP eleven G C pad foot roller in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents. And it will be purchased through Sourcewell Purchasing Agreement.
So moved.
Move Commissioner Billingsley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Bone. Now, the reason we're suspending rules, it wasn't on the agenda, and you're talking with Heath today. Ours is down again. It's a Dyna Pack and it's the two thousand and one model, being over twenty years. Nobody's stocking parts for any of these things anymore. And we've got a rent, one that's rented at five thousand dollars a month.
I'll make a motion with you, man.
I was just giving an explanation as to why we're doing this. Alright, any discuss, uh, more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passing six, one abstention. Uh, and I need a motion to.
Ryan, I forgot about the, uh.
Redneck Olympics to be held at Manuka Park. The county is not associated with fundraisers, but rather it is just authorizing use of the park for this fundraising event.
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Bone, do I have a second?
Second.
You got it. Second Commissioner Perkins, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot about that.
Commissioner, I would recommend that the commission go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing with the county's attorney the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation. And I prepared an affidavit on this and would ask that it be attached to the minutes.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Also that this should take only about five minutes and that the commission will adjourn directly out of these.
Yes, there will be no action taken from this executive session.
And put in there that she has to stay, right?
No, I can lie or stay. They're, they're gonna stay.
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, uh, motion?
I, I, I move.
Commissioner Bone.
Second.
Commissioner Childers. All in favor, raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. So.